Okay. Good evening and welcome to the October 5th, 2020 regular meeting of the Bedford City Council being done via Zoom. Thank you all for listening and council, thanks for being here. If you would please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, where it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, clerk, call the roll, please.
Spinks? Janutus?
Here.
Flew Hardy?
Here.
Miesak?
Here.
Rhodes?
Here.
Saunders?
Here.
Cochi?
Here. Council, you have the minutes of the work session of September 8th, 2020. Any changes or corrections to those? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance by Spinks, second by Rhodes? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Spinks? Yes. Janutus?
Yes.
Flew Hardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes. And council, you have the minutes of the regular meeting of September 8th, 2020. Any corrections to those? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance? By Miesak, second by Janutus? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Spinks? Yes. Janutus?
Yes.
Flew Hardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes. And you have the minutes of the work session of September 21st, 2020. Any corrections to those? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance? By Spinks, second by Rhodes? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Spinks? Yes. Janutus?
Yes.
Flew Hardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes. And we have the minutes of the regular meeting of September 21st, 2020. Any corrections to those? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance? By Miesak, second by Janutus? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Spinks? Yes. Janutus?
Yes.
Flew Hardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes. And under old business, we have ordinance number 9807-20. An ordinance amending ordinance number 6950-97, section 1341.19, entitled Removal of Weeds by Owner Occupant Notice of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bedford and Declaring an Emergency. And Mr. Janutus?
Yes, I'd like to move to amend the ordinance as written to remove item B in section 1341.19 in ordinance 6950-97.
Do we have a second? By Rhodes? Council, call the roll for the amendment.
Spinks? No. Janutus?
Yes.
Flew Hardy?
No.
Miesak?
No.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
No.
Cochi?
No. Amendment does not pass, so I need a motion for suspension. By Spinks, second by Rhodes? Clerk, call the roll.
Spinks? Yes. Janutus?
Yes.
Flew Hardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders? Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes. Now, motion for third and final? By Spinks, second by Flew Hardy? Mike, you want this?
Sure. We, what we did is we rewrote this area, section of the ordinance, the removal of weeds. We updated, law director updated this section specifically outlining the weeds and tall grass section. And then in section B, where it addresses vegetable gardens shall only be permitted or shall not be permitted in the front yard, there's a section in there where if there's unforeseen circumstances or other, it gives the homeowner the ability to appeal to the city manager for for approval due to any unusual or undue hardship.
Thank you. Clerk, call the roll, please. Oh, Heather, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I just want to state for the record that our law director has told us that that amendment is not enforceable. I will vote for this, but I want that on record.
Okay. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Spinks? Yes. Janutus?
Yes.
Flew Hardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes. Ordinance number 9817-20, being an ordinance amending ordinance number 9728-19 concerning section 913.02 sewer rates of the codified ordinances of the city of Bedford as related to sewer rates and declaring an emergency. And it is our wish to put this on a second reading.
That's correct.
Can I have a motion for such? By Spinks, second by Flew Hardy? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Spinks? Yes. Janutus?
Yes.
Flew Hardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yeah.
Cochi?
Yes. Ordinance, excuse me, ordinance number 9818-20, being an ordinance amending ordinance number 9637-18 concerning section 913.03 rate reduction for senior citizens and the permanently disabled of the codified ordinances of the city of Bedford as related to sewer rates and declaring an emergency. And this, we would also like to put on second reading. Can I have a motion for such by Miesak, second by Saunders? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Spinks? Yes. Janutus?
Yes.
Flew Hardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes. Ordinance number 9819-20, an ordinance replacing ordinance number 7780-05 relating to water rates and declaring an emergency. And we wish to put that on second reading also.
That is correct.
Yep. Motion for such by Janutus, second by Spinks? Call the roll, please.
Spinks? Yes. Janutus?
Yes.
Flew Hardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes. Then we have ordinance number 9820-20, an ordinance amending section 351.18 truck parking in residential areas of the traffic code of the Bedford codified ordinances and declaring an emergency. And we want to do this also on second reading. Motion by Miesak, second by Janutus? Call the roll, please.
Spinks? Yes. Janutus?
Yes.
Flew Hardy?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes. And now we have reports from city manager, Mike Mallory.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items today. Wanted to give an update regarding our sewer project that is scheduled to begin this week. And that will be up in the area of, they'll be starting on Henry Street, but it's up in that, in consummate Flew Hardy's ward. So that will be taking place. I don't imagine it going beyond 60 days. But I will, as we get into that project, I'll provide an update at our next council meeting as far as the status. And if we run into any issues regarding that project, if you recall, that is a completely funded through the CDVG grant through County. And we're going to be cleaning and televising all of the sewers in the area. And then obviously going back, if there are any issues, we will be doing any repairs. Wanted to give a quick update. The finance director, Frank Ambosia, and myself are working with all of the department heads and are starting the budget process for 2021. We'll be working through that over the next 10 days and then presenting that to council most likely starting next month. Friendly reminder to all of residents, this will be the last week for the chipper service. If you need that service, please contact the service department to provide your address and we'll get out and make those rounds. We're trying to get that wrapped up so we can then move on to leave season, which with the colder weather, they're going to start falling and most likely will be starting collection middle to end of October. Want to pass along a little bit of big thanks to some staff members in my office that worked on what we're referring to as the Good Neighbor Guide. It's a small, helpful information piece on a number of different issues, you know, parking, trash collection, some helpful information. That is now posted on our website. We'll be putting that out via some social media outlet or social media posts in the upcoming weeks. And then that will be mailed to all of the residents later this year. Obviously, when we do start to welcome packets up and working with our volunteers, it'll be included in that as well. So just kudos to the staff that really worked to put that together. I think it's a good, helpful piece. And you can find that online and hopefully in your mailbox soon. That is end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Law Director, John Montello. You're muted. You're muted.
I'm muted.
There you go.
Got you, got you. Just want to encourage everyone to continue to use best practices regarding, you know, the COVID-19. It looks like it's here to stay for a little while. Wear the mask. And just want to say, go brown. So other than that, end of report.
Thank you. Finance Director, Frank Ambosia.
All right, quickly, the department's been working very long hours on carezact. A lot of entries associated to that and the documentation of the funding we received. Working on, as Mike said, the budget for 2021 with the department directors at this point. Get ready to go in front of council. We're also had a good, successful shredding day. Mike didn't mention that, but that went very well last weekend. And as well as we were able to complete the civil service entrance exam for firemen. We do have 19 candidates that passed the test and are on the list. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Council, Mrs. Spinks?
Yeah, good evening, everybody. Hope we find everybody well. Yeah, I wanted to shout out to, we got this, the city of Bedford Good Neighbor God in our packet this week. And I'm so excited for all the residents to get it. Thank you to everybody that was involved in doing this. I think it's great for new residents and even some of the residents that have been here for a while just gives you a little pressure of what's going on in our city and who to call and numbers and stuff. So Mike, make sure you say kudos to whoever did that. Also, want to give a shout out to the rec department. I'm getting nothing but great calls. Everybody's so excited about the painting in the park. Everybody knows I'm an artist, so I love seeing that. That's great. With this quarantine and the COVID and everything, it's been everybody so isolated and stuff. And it's so great that the rec center is doing that because it's still important to get it out and be able to socialize with people at a safe distance. So this is something that's real positive. I'm always preaching, I miss teaching art therapy. Art, even though if you're not a good artist, still being able to just create something is a good stress relief for, and it's another thing that's so many depression and everything's up right now. So there's so many things, so I encourage the residents to sign up for those classes. I know they have other things going on for when the weather gets bad. So kudos to the rec department. I'm excited about that, things that they're having that are going on. I also want to, this last past week, I don't know if I call it the pleasure, but I had to call the squad, the fire department, and got to ride in our brand new squad. And I tell you one thing, our taxpayers, their tax money is at work. This is like better than some emergency rooms that I've been in. And our guys, of course, it was a little bit embarrassing. It was early morning. I didn't have my makeup on and I was, didn't really care. I did tell the guys I'd kill them if they tell anybody I didn't have my eyebrows on because everybody knows how I look. But I tell you what, the care that I received, I'm okay. I'm, you know, I'll be okay. I've had atrial fib for majority of my life and that acts up every once in a while. And with the medication, those are the kidneys. But I tell you what, those guys were just, you know, you know them, I know them on a, but just the security that you have, that feeling of knowing that you're in good hands and they're like having doctors in there. They, I tell you what, in the hospital had, I went to Bedford Hospital, usually go to the Hoosier. And I tell you what, I'm very proud of our city because and the guys were thinking, you know, council too for giving them the equipment. But if you have a chance, thank those guys, you know, our police department and our fire department. It's just amazing. But I thank the residents for doing that, for these guys to have the equipment. And having friends in other, on other fire departments in other cities, I tell you what, for the size of our city, we have a top notch, we're in good hands. So I just want to pass the word to the guys at the fire department. You guys, I love you and I thank y'all for, you assured me because it's always scary when your heart's not beating right. And so I was in good hands. So I thank them for taking care of me. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Janutus?
Thank you. This is something that can't help but be on everyone's mind, I guess. But when people say, we don't know what the new normal will be, it occurs to me that, it occurs to me, people may be expecting to continue to live in a world that needs to be constantly sanitized, where we can no longer shake hands, hug, kiss, or even gather together. A world in which we will wear hospital masks forever. And I think that's unfortunate. When we became aware of the coronavirus and associated COVID disease, that is many people's physical reaction to it with dire consequences, there were projections of the possibility of millions of deaths. And we responded accordingly with good intentions. However, since then, the original predictions were shown to not be accurate. Yet, we continued with the same protocols. And while many of us truly must take appropriate measures to protect ourselves from serious injury, the data is clear, not all of us do. I hope we find the silver lining to this pandemic and begin to understand the nature of those viruses. Without viruses, there could be no evolution of life on this planet. We may even find that the virus is a genetic update that may well provide an adaptation to our very toxic environment. It appears that this virus was generated from the most toxic polluted place on earth. In the plant world where I work, we say, environment determines genetic expression. Here's hoping, when we emerge on the other side of the tunnel, we will enter into a decidedly brighter and more wonderful world. One where we strive to live healthier lives, address the toxins we currently are allowing, and seek out pure air and pure water and pure food. The future of the world is at stake, which may be the message in all of this. So I hereby call on the city of Bedford through the Division of Parks and Recreation to evaluate the use of potentially harmful chemicals and toxic pesticides that may be being used particularly on our playgrounds and ball fields where children play. Is our civic duty beyond our focus on real estate values to work to create toxic-free neighborhoods and clean air, water, and land? End of report.
Thank you, Wally. Mr. Flew Hardy?
Thank you, Mayor. I got a couple of things here to say. I want to thank the two guys that cut, did our grass cutting this summer. In my ward, have been taking care of all summer. The ward itself has been, I'm proud of the people in my ward. We did a good job this year. I didn't have too many problems whatsoever with people cutting their grass. Took care of it. And I want to congratulate the two guys that came out all summer and kept everything above water for us. So those bad times we got behind, they, I think that grass cutting position was the best thing we could have done. It was a difference. It was a difference in our city, period. Also, I want to remind everybody that voting will be at Elwood for Ward 3. I'll be with you two more times to keep reminding you. But, and also that information packet, Mike, that you sent out, I think that thing is, has a lot of great information on that. I think we need to make sure, though, our tenants get a hold of those things, not the landlord or the homeowner. They'll never give them to, and the ones that are living in the house need to get these neighborhood guides. So somehow, we got to make sure these guys, the people that rent these places, do get this information because it has a lot for them and it's good for the city and good for them too. End of report.
Thank you. Mrs. Miesak?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. It's nice to be back on the phone with you or on the computer screen. A couple of questions or first off, comments. Downtown is starting to look beautiful again with the fall array. I look forward to the fall. I love the fall. I think it's the best part of the year for everybody. I did have an inquiry, and this is for the city manager. What does the property at the corner of Bartlett and Rockside Road corner on the side where the Harrington apartments are, the apartments are, what do they do at that corner? Because I noticed in the ambulance, our squad went up there about two weeks ago on a Friday. And we're a little concerned, but we didn't turn around. But is that a service station or?
No, it was.
Very, various things going on. I was just wondering.
Yeah, we've been up there a few times, but it was approved for a detail business.
Thank you. Thank you. And then we, the neighbors around here have been very, very supportive of one another during this long COVID. We do a regular Monday check, our senior citizens check once a week just to see that everybody's doing all right. And our gas station evidently is doing fairly well too. They have extended their hours. And county club is starting to change their look and make it more enticing the future renters. But they need to, my other concern about that is they need to take care of the people that they have there already. Mel Cook sends his regards. Everything's quiet on the Mel's side of the street. And as far as anything else, because Mike's been handling everything, I call him about very well. I also want to comment about this new guy that came out. I think it is a very good gesture and for everybody to keep handy at close hand when there's a question that we can't answer for them or if we can help them along with it, we can both refer to it at the same time. I did do a survey over the weekend. This was just because we, nobody has really things to do right now except go outside if you can and spend a lot of time in with your family. Dunkin' Donuts, we had one. Request is to have one in Bedford because I heard Macedonia is bringing up the second store. Oakwood, we've got another one, a big one of the Dunkin' Donuts. And now we need one because we don't have a bakery anymore and everybody gets a donut crave most of the time. But that was just a little bit of, a little ha-ha type survey we did over the weekend, but I thought I'd bring it out there. I left Jen Kuzma message in regards to it too. Thank you. No report, no more report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Rhodes?
Hello, everyone. Thank you for joining us. First of all, I wanted to thank everyone who participated in our first Friday season this past year. This October was our last first Friday for the year. We'll be coming back in March with our March for Art. And we look forward to seeing everyone then. Hopefully, we'll get to see you in person then. I would like to draw attention, if you hadn't noticed, we have a lovely banner up over Broadway in downtown. We are doing our Live, Love, Buy Bedford campaign. We currently have some signs. I don't know if I'm going to be able to get this to show up, maybe. Nope, not going to do it. Okay. We have some beautiful signs that you can hang up in your business window if you have a business here in Bedford. If you have a business and you'd like one of our we're reopened signs, you can get one by emailing us at stories@bedforddowntown.org. Again, that's stories@bedforddowntown.org. These signs are, in many of our downtown businesses, BDA is providing these signs to any Bedford business. Leading up to the holiday season, we will be doing a Live, Love, Buy Bedford campaign to remind all of our residents that if you live here in Bedford and you love Bedford, shop at Bedford locations and help them through this difficult time. Many of our businesses downtown are making it and it's because many of our residents are coming down to shop with them. This holiday season, it's especially important. Stop in at our shops and see if they've got something special you can give to your friends. See if they've got something special you'd like to buy. We'd like to see you all downtown. And then that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Saunders?
Yes. First, I'll answer Paul on her Dunkin' message. It's the same owner that built Oakwood, Twinsburg, the one that's currently in Macedonia and the one going up in Northfield Center. It's all the same owner. So if you wanted his contact, I'll give it to you. But yeah, the donuts, we had the donut shop behind Burger King and that one didn't get too far either. So, but in any case, I got two.
It was not because of lack of business.
No, it wasn't due to lack of business. It was dispute between business.
Probably something we shouldn't be discussing on.
Yeah. But in any case, I have two questions for Mike. One, are we doing any tree lifting this year? Because, uh, Kimball's trucks have been hitting trees all over the place here lately. Uh, and they just leave the branches on the tree lawns.
We, we are doing some, um, those trees were marked, um, and we council passed an ordinance a couple of meetings ago. Um, at a number of our parks, um, and some of our properties were removing trees and elevating trees. And then there's others that are arborists. Um, we went out and trees that were on it, that we are unable to remove for safety concerns, if they're, uh, near the wires or if there's some that, that do need to be, uh, elevated, we're working to, to adjust or to address those. But I, I, as far as citywide, I mean, I don't want to say that, yeah, we'll be around the whole city because that's not realistic right now.
Yeah, well, we've got quite a few streets that do need the trees lifted up because, uh, they're overhanging. The streets are even hitting cars, not just the trucks going up them.
Well, if there's, if there's, if there's a street like that, let me know the street. I mean, we've, we've gone through, you know, our arborists and our crews did go through throughout the year working on those. If there's streets that, that are doing that, I'd like you to pass them on and, you know, we'll address them.
All right, I'll, I'll get you some of them. Uh, the second question is our sidewalk program. Did we move forward with that? And are residents allowed to use the same bid price if they want to do their own?
Yeah. So we actually, we spoke about that last week and this week. So our plan is to do a sidewalk program. We, what we wanted to do is get through our road program first. You never know if you're going to run into, um, any overages due to the amount of the extensive repairs that we did on Powers Road and Forbes. So now that, that those are wrapped up, we, in the perfect world, we'd be ready to start our sidewalk program. With the weather, I'm not, and I think our service department, it, you know, we spoke about that. We're all in agreement not to start, um, you know, pouring concrete, you know, in the next 30, 45 days. What we're looking to do is we're going to be encumbering this year's, uh, sidewalk funds into next year and do twice the, the project next year. The roads that are, or the streets that are identified for the sidewalk program, those residents will be contacted and they will have the ability to, if they wanted to do additional work, they can get the price that the city of Bedford will be given.
Yeah, but what about the other areas of the city? Can they use the same bid price with that contractor? Then by the way, you're actually better off pouring the concrete in October because it's cooler. The summertime, it hydrates too fast and it tends to crack and show up at a later date.
We would look to be doing this in the spring. I mean, ideally it'd be great if we could pour right now, but we can't turn around in a week. I mean, that's something that, you know, we'd have to go out. We'd have to know the amount that we would be doing. Um, and we'd have to be able to notify the residents and to get quotes. We would be pouring mid to end of November and I, I'm not comfortable with that.
But we don't have a bid price then that other residents can use.
Uh, for this year, no, we're going to be, we're going to be doing it in the spring.
Okay. Cause I've got several residents that want to do their sidewalks and they were hoping to be able to feed off of the bid price because the cities is bound to be less than they get. All right. Thank you.
That it?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I just wanted to say, uh, everybody have a good day. Enjoy this nice, uh, week of weather we're going to have right now because who knows what next week's going to be like. But it sure was a beautiful day today. I think we need to just get on with business. And with that, we have ordinance number 9821-20. And, excuse me, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to contract with Gardner to initiate energy improvements pursuant to the recommendations of the investment grade audit and declaring an emergency. Um, I have a motion for suspension by Rhodes, second by Janutus. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Thanks. Yes. Janutus?
Yes.
Fluhardy?
Yes.
Muzak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes. And a motion for third and final by Saunders, second by Spinks. Uh, Mike, you want to take this?
Uh, yes. Uh, if you recall, we passed legislation earlier this year to make, um, numerous energy improvements um, to areas that were identified through an energy audit that we partnered with Gardner to perform. Um, the two projects that we decided to move forward on were the replacement of the hot water tanks, um, at the municipal complex, which were showing signs of failure and replacement of all of these city-owned lights along Willis Street and Taylor. Um, those are city-owned, the decorative lights, um, and they have failed. There's a number of them that are not working at all. Uh, we would be switching those out to, uh, decorative LED lighting. And based on the, uh, numbers that have come in, this ordinance represents, uh, the total amount that those two projects will, um, cost. And just as a reminder that 90, roughly 93, $94,000 will be funded through, uh, NOPEC grants. And the rest, the remaining funds will come out of the, uh, street lighting fund.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Thanks. Yes. Janutus?
Yes.
Fluhardy?
Yes.
Muzak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes. Ordinance number 9822-20. An ordinance repealing section 151, excuse me, section 511.12 entitled Criminal Activity Nuisances, Costs of Enforcement of the Bedford Codified Ordinances and Declaring an Emergency. And I need a motion for suspension by Spinks, second by Fluhardy. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluhardy?
Yes.
Muzak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes. Motion for third and final by Muzak, second by Janutus. Mr. Law Director, you want to take this one?
Yeah, just so, we're, we're going to repeal our, our current criminal activity nuisance ordinance, uh, to, to explore other dispute resolution techniques for the reasons stated in the ordinance. And, uh, I'd ask that you pass it tonight.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluhardy?
Yes.
Muzak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes. All right. Resolution number 2556-20. A resolution authorizing the city manager to prepare and submit an application to the Northeast Ohio Area Wide Coordinating Agency, NOAACA, for transportation for livable communities initiative and to execute contracts as required and declaring an emergency. I have a motion for suspension by Saunders, second by Fluhardy. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluhardy?
Yes.
Muzak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes. And you're going to have a motion for third and final by Muzak, second by Spinks. Uh, Mike?
Uh, yes, Mayor. This, uh, the NOAACA planning grant, the TLCI, is a planning grant. In order to be eligible for implementation funds through NOAACA, you have to first go through the planning process. We would like to submit application for the planning, um, and to work with NOAACA for the information, implementation of our connectivity project, the connector project to, um, the Egbert Trail of the Metro Park through Viaduct Park and connecting downtown Bedford, the bridge and trail project.
Good. Uh, clerk, call a roll, please.
Thanks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluhardy?
Yes.
Muzak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes. And it comes to that portion, the hearing of citizens, which we have been doing through, uh, email to citymanager@bedfordoh.gov. Citymanager@bedfordoh.gov. Forgot to mention it earlier. So, uh, Mike, anything come in yet? We'll give it a few minutes.
Uh, yes, we, we actually have a couple before we announced it. So word is kind of getting out that that's where they can submit.
All right.
I have two, um, and I'll, I'll read. The first one is from, um, Ann McPherson from 22 Crestwell Avenue. I will read it. To city manager of Bedford, the residents of Ward One. A would like to have no parking signs on Greencroft, Greencroft and all side streets because getting in and out of our drive sometimes can be impossible, mainly because of the parked cars on our street. We have renters out here. Their friends come over and park their cars and have no consideration as to how close they park in front of our driveways. Number one, the streets are too narrow to accommodate the number of cars that are being parked on our narrow streets. Sometimes they park on the street all night. They do not care. Please do something to help us homeowners. I'm getting petitions signed by all the homeowners in the area. I'm being very careful of the COVID-19, but in the meantime, please, uh, help. Thank you. I will, um, I will mention, um, and you know, we, we started about a little over a month ago. Um, we started posting information on social media. Um, we were, um, giving courtesy warnings for over, you know, a week and our, our police department were working to address some of the parking concerns. If it, if it is the parking overnight, um, if it is parking on, um, lawns and things of that nature. Um, and over the last two weeks, we, we have been, uh, increasing, um, those, uh, there's been a substantial amount of citations issued as well. Um, they have been in the area. Um, they have patrolled that area. I think they've addressed some of the, the concerns. Um, and we'll continue to monitor, uh, to monitor that.
Okay.
Um, I will, I'll move to the, the next question is from, uh, Brittany Jones. Um, there isn't an address, but I believe, um, she is a resident of Bayberry Lane. Uh, good evening. I have a concern that I assume is appropriately voiced during the council meeting. I am a homeowner on Bayberry Lane in Bedford, Ohio, a cul-de-sac housing development, all occupant owned. We have never been given city-issued trash cans or recycle bins, and I'd like to request that we do. We pay Bedford property taxes, resident city taxes, and the water and sewer bill to the city of Bedford. Yet we seem to be the only street in the city without these receptacles. Please advise. Uh, Ms. Jones, I'll, I'll look into that. I, I am, I believe, and I, I, I have to verify this. Um, there's a couple of areas in the community that are not, uh, provided the, um, the trash receptacle and recycle receptacle. Um, one that comes to mind, I know Dale Park does not as well, and I believe their, uh, owner occupant, um, uh, residences, um, I believe one of the main reasons is the ability to collect those. It simply is not possible for, um, the trash collection companies to get their vehicles in there and empty and, and obtain the cans. That's why there has always been, um, dumpsters in, in some of these facilities. I will look and clarify that some more. I could be, um, not entirely accurate or there might be more information that I can't provide. Uh, and we will reach out to you, uh, either myself or a staff member, um, tomorrow morning.
Thank you. Anything else come up?
I'm doing a quick refresh. No, there is not.
Okay. And, and that, uh, site is available all the time. So if somebody thinks of something later on, they can still send it in on that, that we will, uh, certainly take a look at. Yes, Paula?
Uh, and Ms. Jones's request, Mike?
Yeah.
I believe she's one of the newer residents there. Because like before Kimball even came in and we had waste management doing our trash pickup. Like you said, it is hard to get the truck in there. And now with the arm off of the, uh, Kimball truck, it would make, it would be too much of a mess would be going on. But they did at one time, I think it was a waste management, issued the recycle bags that the residents did use and put out every week like they were supposed to. So I'd appreciate it if you looked into it and let me know so I can tell them also. Thank you.
I will, I will do, I will do that.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. And, uh, if we have nothing further there, Mike?
Nope. No other comments.
Then I would ask for a motion for adjournment. I Spinks, second by Rhodes. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluhardy?
Yes.
Muzak?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes. And thank you all for, uh, being here. And for those of you at home listening, we appreciate your input and, uh, that you take some interest in our council meetings. And with that, good night.